Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the Killingly and the Wetlands Water Course Commission. Karina, you probably can't see us. Do you want to do the roll call or do you want to stall who at you?
I actually think I can see everyone.
You can't, we can't see you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'll try to do camera next time.
All right, that's fine.
All right, Sandy Eggers?
Here.
Rodney Galton?
Here.
Paul Archer?
Here.
Chris McDonald?
Yeah.
I can't see who is on the far right.
Amy's here, too, Amy's here.
All right. Amy is here, I see, and Karina Teres present.
All right. So everyone will be voting and we've got a good turnout again. It's been great lately with everybody. You don't have to leave for vacation for at least another day. Oh, no, half a day.
Tomorrow morning?
Yep, that's right. All right, so we'll start with the adoption of the minutes of the February 3rd, 2025 regular meeting.
Motion to adopt the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adopt the minutes of the February 3rd, 2025 regular meeting as they were presented. Any changes or additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, if we were gonna have citizens' participation, I think you'd be it, Jonathan.
Yeah, I don't have anybody else that's joined. There's no one in the audience.
Nope, and no one sent us anything, or that would be correspondence anyhow, so...
Yep, nothing.
Okay. Unfinished business. The bylaws and rules of procedure. Are we doing anything with those, or did you have a chance?
So my suggestion for the bylaws, I did pass out to the commission a copy, a new copy of Robert's Rules. It's a nice briefed, summarized version off of the master copies by the same publisher and everything, so it's the approved version. My suggestion, because we had a couple questions that went back to Robert's Rules, so I still have those from our last meeting when we discussed it.
Can you just bring those up again? Because I can't remember from last month. What about you guys?
One of them had to do with amending the rules and/or suspending the rules.
Yep.
And then there was a conversation regarding site walks.
Okay.
Just to make sure that we're in line for FOIA and also with what Connecticut deep recommends for wetlands commissions for site walks. I don't have those answers yet, so I'm gonna just ask that we table kind of a good part to plug in. We do have a training coming up this month with the Connecticut Bar Association. That is gonna be on March 22nd. It's an all-day training, and I think there's one part for wetlands that's wetlands-specific is around 1:00. I know a few members have expressed, you know, wanting to join, but maybe just for that hour. We as staff members are gonna be there all day. You guys are welcome to attend all day. You can also join remotely if you can't come in person. But is there anybody who absolutely not can't be here? Otherwise, I'm gonna sign everybody up.
So I mean, I think I should be, I don't think I'm gonna be around that day, but go ahead and sign us up, that's the worst case.
If we sign you up, you get a book from Connecticut Bar Association.
That sounds good.
It's a good resource, so...
Sign us all up.
Okay, I will look to sign you all up. I believe we have in our budget anyways, so...
So dump it with a lunch.
Yeah, so if you tend in person, I will feed you, so...
Well, I don't think I'm gonna be around either, but I will most likely join online if I can.
Okay.
You know, I might do that as well, too, for the, you could give us a heads up when it's the correct time, too.
Yeah, I can send you a text or even an email, yep.
That would make, yeah, send us a text when it's the time, and then I probably would.
Okay. The other one, which was the next application that...
Yep, application, okay, so actually, we probably need a motion to table that.
Motion to table the bylaw and rules of procedure discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item's application 25-1602 of Tammy and Kenneth, I'm sorry, Kenneth and Tammy Crowe. And you said, wanna just fill us in that we'll be tabling that as well?
Yep, so the applicant's representative has requested to continue that till next month. They're going through the memorandum, which Dave Capashion apologizes, was only able to get out to them today. It all revolved around the, for the most part, the roadway, the right-of-way, and also a right to maintain. There is a right...
The drainage, I would assume, too.
Well, there's a right to drain, but there wasn't a right to maintain. So they wanna potentially get some of that just up to today's standard. Also, the road narrows at one point. There's a perfect opportunity to make that work. Unlike a subdivision, these are more of the town asking the applicant. There's not necessarily provisions that they have to do some of these things. So it's a back-and-forth conversation, and hopefully we have that settled for next month.
Good. All right.
Motion to table application 25-1602.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to table application 25-162 until next month. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, you are not here.
Not here.
That's right, because you are the, okay.
He abstains, or...
No, he, he's, yeah, he's not here for that. So he abstains. All right, new business. We actually don't have any.
No, no, no new business that has come up. There's a few people that are prepping applications. I know there's some that are probably, hopefully we'll have probably for next month. You'll see later on...
Are they major or just single properties, or...
Um, there's one bigger one. There's a big fish. But otherwise, most of them are just single properties. Couple people are working, reaching out to surveyors, trying to find surveyors that are available and what their timeframes are. So, a lot of little single-family house.
Because they're all busy, you'll be having to leave the room often.
I hope so.
All right, then our big deal this evening is correspondence of the commission. Run us, fill us in on the updates from the Siting Council.
Yep, so the Connecticut Siting Council has sent out a notice regarding docket number 470C, which is our NTE project. Now, that's not the battery storage, that was the power plant, the proposed power plant. It does relate to the battery storage facility, because they are looking to close out the NTE project, because currently there is...
So nothing was really official with the battery until NT, because NTE holds the rights on everything there.
Yeah, and they're two separate entities. So because they're two separate entities, there had to be kind of this reopening to, I'm guessing, the battery storage. People are looking to have it closed.
Because of the need.
Because of the need. Because technically, the need is being addressed by the power plant, which we know is currently not being built, right? So that's mainly it. I know the town manager has weighed in a little bit on that. The town council has been meeting, too, because we were parties to that application, and we are now, I believe, parties to the new Vitus application.
You are now, you think?
I believe we do have the party status there, so...
Because I didn't figure out why we weren't to start with.
And part of it was, had to do with like this. Like, they didn't consider the application to be complete yet, and because it wasn't complete, they weren't gonna start assigning party status. But they did respond, you know, we covered that last month.
Yep.
They did respond to our rules and procedures request and agreed to most of those. So we're watching that. I have reached out to the town manager and that. I know our town attorneys will be representing the town as a whole. Probably gonna join, I'm probably gonna join it just to listen to the proceedings. But there's really no action. It's just a notification of when the meeting is, and if you guys have any questions or anything like that, let me know, or I can even ask to get clarity.
Do you know if there's a waiting period once I reopen this? Like, is it open for public comment for like 30 days or 60 days or whatever?
As far as I know, it's open for that meeting. They're giving opportunity for people to sign up, to submit comment or submit testimony. And I believe they're asking for people to do that prior to March 31st. It is all in the packet. For anyone that is interested, it's linked on the Facebook post tonight. And I wanna say it is a 30-day period, looking at this.
Yeah, which is fairly typical.
Yeah. I don't think it's anything beyond that, pending another motion or another action by the Siting Council.
Okay.
So when is the meeting?
The... I wanna say it's in April, hold on.
Well, the whole meeting's only for them to state that there's no longer a need.
Yeah, April 1st. So it's the beginning of an event, evidence session. It starts at 2:00 PM and continuing with public comment session at 6:30 PM. So it's a later meeting, it's on a Tuesday. And that's the only date that's discussed in here.
So I, so I'm, I would assume there's a procedure here. They, they close out this certificate, right? And then they can accept the full application for the battery storage, right?
That would be my belief as well, yeah.
And then there would be...
Does anything have to start over, or will it just be accepted as it's been presented?
As far as I know, nothing starts over.
See, that was my question, Sandy.
That's what I was wondering, too.
That was my question.
Because they haven't dismissed the battery storage application, nor have they dismissed NTE, right? The power plant. So I believe this is looking to clear up, you know, the fact that you have an approved permit for a property, and you have a pending application for the same property, and there can't be both.
Yes.
So, and so I would imagine if this gets extinguished...
So this one is housekeeping.
The next one. This is housekeeping.
This one is nothing but housekeeping.
That's my understanding as well.
And then the true hearing will commence on the battery storage facility.
Yes, yep.
So I need to just ask for clarification and see if I understand this. We did this work on the battery storage facility, but unspoken in that was that we needed a power source to go to the batteries. We needed a...
Um, no, no.
No, 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 this is from, this is stuff that's already there. This is just housekeeping.
A few years ago, we went through a Connecticut Siting process that involved a power plant.
They've approved a power plant for that property.
And that eventually just kinda died out. But there's still the permit from Connecticut Siting Council to NTE Connecticut LLC for that power plant. And because it's still an open approval, the new entity's looking to close it out.
Okay, and the new entity is the battery?
Is the battery storage, yep.
Now, this may be a dumb question, but where does, where does the energy being stored in the batteries?
So the, the battery storage is siphoning off the grid. They're taking, they're buying power at off-peak hours when it's cheaper, and then selling it back at peak times when there's a need for it. Yep.
Yeah, so this one is purely housekeeping?
Yep.
Okay.
And there's, there's no motion or anything involved with that?
No, that's just information.
Correspondence, yep.
All right, now some stuff, though. Authorized agent applications. The first one was application 25-1601 of Xavier Harrell for single-family residence at 115 Coomer Hill.
Yep, so that one was brought to you in part last month, but I did include that for the report, because it was approved after the meeting, just so that way you guys know. We've met with the applicant and gone through it. He had a small modification, but it was interior of his house plan. It had nothing to do with you guys, and that one is moving forward. So I believe he just applied for his building permit.
No, I'm sorry, I have to go back again. The, the meeting about this...
Was on the 3rd.
Closing that power plant thing, why is there, there's an evidence session and two 6:30 public information sessions?
They start with the parties, so the parties are able to introduce evidence, and then, so anyone that's listed as party to that application, under that narrow reason for why they have opened it. Then they move to public comment, where anybody who signed up can give their, weigh in on the application.
So it's a procedural?
Yep, yep. Similar to like how we do a public hearing here, we'll let an applicant speak, and then we'll then open the floor to people to speak for, against, or just ask questions.
Should we give him his, our blessing, or just leave it as it is?
So all of these ones that have been approved, at this point, would only come back to you if there's an appeal of the agent decision.
Or if we, if we say something this evening as well?
They're approved.
They're approved.
They're approved, they're approved, yep. The ones that are approved, I can go through those if you'd like.
Yep.
We can move on to the next one, Alexander's Lake.
Yep, Ron Baraboe, yep.
Yep, so Ron Baraboe's application, he had an existing rear deck. He's replacing the rear deck with a slightly larger, but it's really just moving the footings a little bit. And on the front, the addition is on the front side, opposite of the wa, not near the water, it's on the roadside application. We've had other similar applications at Alexander's Lake that have always been staff-level. So I move forward on that one. The gentleman's looking to, he was hoping to get some foundation work done, you know, when we have this, you know, lull. So I did move forward on, on that application. There's really not much to it. If the circumstances do change with any of these applications, part of the approval is the ability to bring it back to the commission. So if I have somebody modify an application, or we see something that even triggers a new regulatory aspect, it's gonna come to you. I'll bring them right in front of you.
Okay.
So, so that one's pretty basic, honestly, for Alexander's Lake. They submitted a survey and everything, and a nice application as a whole. I do have them here, if you guys wanna look at any of these. The next application was James Hudson and Kimberly McCullough Hudson for Shippey Schoolhouse Road. They actually had two lots back there. It's part of an old 2003 subdivision. Those lots were never built on. They're working with J&amp;D Engineering. One of the lots, 187 Shippey Schoolhouse, does come within the 200-foot upwind review area for two different wetland pockets. But it was mirrored the same location as the house from 2003. The only real difference was they had a detached workshop. Their plan did label as a barn. I got clarity from them. It was workshop. That's one of the items that I did reach out to J&amp;D to see if we could just get updated on the plan, because a barn has to be further from a property line, and that would change some items with it. But that was a, it's a nice property, kinda unique. There's a cemetery on the property, which the town has easement over, a shared rear drive. So it is a unique property. I did not see any real way of creating impacts there. Also, it was very reminiscent of what the board had already approved in 2004, is when the actual approval was rendered. The last one is not an agent decision as of right now. This is a zoning permit application for a new house. A wetlands application has not been submitted. When the original application, and I think we discussed this a little bit last month, when the original application came forward for 300 Valley Road, we were, had on our wetlands map the possibility of hydroic soils, and there was a report from a soil scientist attesting to some in the area, but no map showing them. That was done with one surveyor. Then they, they did switch to a different surveyor. When they switched to a different surveyor, we had an updated site plan. They didn't call out those wetlands, and I sought clarity on that. We did site visits. The only area that staff could really find them was near the trolley line. It seemed to just be kind of low spots next to the edge of the old trolley line, which is now a sewer easement. We looked at that. We asked for clarity from CLA. They sent their soil scientists out. That report is in the packet, and they did update the map. I did realize on the printed copy here, the map does cut off the little pocket that was identified. I do have the map here, if you guys wanna look at it.
How far away?
It is... I wanna say, from the actual house, it's pretty far away. There's a footing drain that goes towards it. The footing drain's kinda looking for the only spot, because of the grave, to get to daylight. One of my only comments really in regards to that footing drain, because there's some notes on it with the health department, was they would have to armor that footing drain. As, as it stands right now, let's assume flow, and I would need to have it armored, just to protect. I'll give you a copy of that. That's your pocket right here. It's just on the very edge of this trolley line, so it's on the...
Yeah, he says that it's not part of any actual system.
And that's what we found there as well.
Just to facilitate the flow of stormwater.
Yeah, the whole, I mean, you know, don't even...
The whole trolley.
Yeah, it's just like that.
Yep, that's what I was gonna say, everywhere...
Pockets have developed over the years.
But is that, is the footing drain just gonna enhance that?
Footing, see, the footing drain's considered clean discharge, so would it normally be anything negative?
No, but it'll just make the wetlands...
It might make it bigger, yeah, yeah. It might hurt, it might hurt the next guy who's, you know, looking to build in the area. But the...
But like you said, everything along that trolley line...
Yeah, there's pockets everywhere.
Yeah. I think it's very dependent, you know, when they get up there and start breaking, and this is where I'm leaning towards staff, working with staff. When they go out there and they get their footing drains and get it, you know, all dug out and everything, get the footings in and stuff, we're gonna start to see where that water table's at, if anything. If they need to modify, maybe there isn't a basement, maybe they're gonna go to a slab. But as of right now, they're proposing a pretty, you know, typical, you know, construction. So...
So at this point, it still hasn't been...
Is there an application?
An application and for...
There's a zoning permit, and there's a building permit that have been applied for. That, they initially...
So it's a question of whether or not it's an agent approval or full application?
Yep, yeah, so I'm leaning towards agent action at the time, given the facts. It's, it doesn't seem to be something that would be...
Just seems like it's typical trolley line. You see anything on there, though? You guys might spot it.
What would their best interest be here? Approval by us or approval by an agent?
Either one, either one. If it's an agent, somebody could have the ability to appeal, it'll just come right back to you.
Yeah.
I have the ability to bring them in here, if need be, if the facts change during the project. I'm comfortable having walked the property three times now. It's a very small property. It's a lot of record that, of working with the applicant.
I, I'm, I'm very confused, because I'm, I'm looking at these test holes, and it looks like groundwater is fairly consistent, 24 inches, thereabouts. But these perk rates, two minutes per inch, I mean, that is fast.
Yeah.
That's wicked fast.
Most of the areas where they did the...
It doesn't really jive with the 24...
The water to be right there.
Yeah, correct.
The test hole areas, we noted there was a lot of gravel in that. You could see it, you know, where they had dug up.
Were the test holes dunked?
Test holes are, I mean, everywhere, right in through this whole area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here's two.
There's one. And we have modeling at 32, modeling at 35, modeling at 25, modeling at 24, modeling at 24.
I believe at this point...
About two minutes per inch?
Yeah, I believe they did get the health department approval...
How deep was it?
On those.
19? That's impressive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe the health department did issue an approval.
They did.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I mean, they have to stamp it, so if the system fails, it's on the engineer, I guess, but...
Agreed.
That, it just, those two things don't jive in my mind.
Has Dave Capashion looked at this one? Has the engineer looked at this for the driveway?
Uh, I've showed Dave this one. He didn't supply me with any comments on it. I did ask him a little bit about the footing drain, kinda wrapping it around and, and everything, and he didn't have anything that he needed, you know, felt needed a memo or anything. Honestly, with the driveway, it's really gonna be tracking pad and stuff, and that's kind of our typical conditions, when, even when I'm just talking about zoning permit. You gotta show me your tracking pad. We have to pull your driveway permit will be required.
Well, see, in your comment...
But if they've got water at two feet...
To your comment, exactly.
They're gonna be on a slab, or they're not gonna...
You would think so.
This other memo that he did for Crowe's.
Yep.
There is no tracking pad detail on it.
Well, so, so on the zoning permit, we will require all of that.
And there's no detail for the driveway?
Yes, yeah, so that, that application is through the, through Dave directly as our driveway permit.
Gotcha.
So we require it at the get-go, go upstairs, get a driveway permit with Dave, because it is a town road, so they'll need that. They'll have to show a tracking pad before they start construction, all of that. And then, at the very end of the project, it becomes a sign-off thing for certificate of occupancy. Given the timing of this, they should be able to pave and have an apron and everything like that. Everything should be open by the time they're starting, you know, this project. You know, in April, they usually open.
Should, if they've got water at 24 inches, shouldn't they just be planning on a slab?
I wanna say, I don't have the house plans in front of me. I, I think it might be slab.
It'd make a lot of sense.
It would seem like you would have to.
Well, that would, then that would get rid of the footing drain.
Either that or have an indoor...
Right.
Yeah.
Let me, let me see if I can just pull up the...
And even just looking at that footing drain, it really doesn't make any sense why they're running it so far.
They don't, because they could dig down over here.
Correct.
But the next question is, is are they really allowed to dump that close to a property line?
Yeah, wouldn't that be a point discharge?
I don't think that's a point discharge right there. They might have to back it up a little, a little bit. They have to be cognizant of that note from the health department there, to not, to have it, the pipe open within so many feet of that septic system.
I mean, if they have that good of stuff, they could just put a drywall over here and dump it into...
Dump it into a small drywall.
Correct.
Take a hole, fill it with crushed stone, put it right into it.
Well, if they got, if their, if their perk rate is two minutes...
Yeah, drywall would make sense.
Drywall would make perfect sense.
Yeah. Honestly, given the length of the pipe and everything like that, it might be more economic, too, to...
Yes, I, I think it would be, for sure. But I, I don't know, I'm confused by the test pit data and the perk data. Doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me, because essentially, you're putting your septic right on top of soil that's constantly soaked. If, if there's models there, right?
Correct, but yet it drains?
Yeah, crazy fast.
Right, it drains two minutes per inch, that's, that's insane.
Yeah.
I'm just seeing if I can pull up the, the building plan. I believe they were scanning, just hold on one second.
Really?
Isn't he the observant devil?
No. Look, look who did the perk test.
Wait, where?
Yeah, yeah.
Was it the health department?
No.
No?
Nope.
No, CLA did it.
CLA did it.
Like I said, they're stamping it.
Right.
So does, does anyone tell them, what about a drywall?
Town staff can recommend that they think about it, but...
Yeah, I can, I can ask for them to explore the option.
Yeah. But you're right, that doesn't...
Doesn't compute, does it?
No, because if it's that quick, it would be a non-engineered septic system.
Non-engineered septic system.
One hundred percent at the grade.
Correct.
If it's going that quick.
Something is.
They are showing a partial basement with a bulkhead. Partial unfinished basement, they don't call it out, but this is on the building plans, showing a partial.
Trying to see when they did the test.
Twenty-four?
It said it there.
September twenty-four?
Yeah. So they did it in the dry season.
They did, but, I mean, they didn't hit groundwater per se in any of these, but with modeling that high, obviously groundwater gets that high.
Correct.
So does the health, the health department find out on that? Do they have the information that?
The health department approved it on January third.
Do they have the expertise, you know, in that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yep, so the health department is, you know, fairly typical, they want the surveyors stake out the house, the well, all of that stuff.
The usual, it's just, it states basically that.
It's their standard stuff.
Their standard.
That it's suitable for a septic system is what it actually states.
And it's funny because the whole system, all these systems are totally out of ground.
Yes.
One hundred percent out of ground. How much topsoil is in that?
Uh, zero to five, zero to five, zero to four, zero to five, zero to four.
Pick out four inches of topsoil and then bring in, so they gotta bring in almost.
They're bringing in a lot of fill here.
I guess, twenty inches of fill. That's a lot.
That's, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, they're bringing in a decent amount of fill.
I mean, off the back here, what is that? Almost five feet, five feet of fill, yeah.
That's gonna be the five feet that goes out.
But the kicker is the fact that this is one of the few times that there's actually an approval already in place.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, since January.
That's quite often that's what we're waiting for.
Right.
I'm just more curious about, like I said, I agree with.
The septic.
It's a point discharge.
Yeah, I think that's a point discharge.
So I usually have them pull it back and then I ask for them to create like a little plunge for it. So that way it, it level spreads from there. But it is very dependent on the flows, you know, when we, I've, I've seen some in the middle of summer that just run all the time. And based off some of that, it sounds like it might.
But on this, if it's, if it's going in that quick, it should be able to put a drywall in and just dump it all into a drywall.
Yeah.
Immediately.
Yeah.
I can require them as a condition to swap for a drywall, provided it's, would be approved by the health department. Because if they're changing their structure, they're probably gonna have to bounce it back to the health department, just to confirm, they might not care.
I mean, I don't, I mean, this is a stamp plan, I don't know if you can demand it.
I don't, I, I can ask.
Yeah, you can ask.
I can ask, they can tell me no.
Yes.
Now, let me ask this question, so what if this person, the neighbor over here on Valley Road, this Daniel Moser, all of a sudden comes in and says, that guy's draining onto my property, which we're in a case right now that's going on.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the.
Does that come back to us because we approved this plan?
Typically, a point discharge would have to show that it was brought right to the line. It, it.
I, I, I'm not.
It, it can be argued, I know it can be argued either way.
Yeah. I mean, you have a, you have a professional surveyor and a professional engineer here, I would question that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the overall goal i- is always to keep all your water on your site.
Yes.
And so I, I'm okay with the footing drain, if they want to route it that long route. But it probably should go to a catch basin or a retention area or something.
It should go to something.
Should keep it on the site.
Not the neighbors.
Not, not to flow over ground in this case. If, if it was going to, say, a water body or something like that, we probably wouldn't care.
Yeah, that, that's a different thing. Who, who owns the property to the north?
Well, this guy right here, Moser.
He owns, he owns all this?
Well, he owns this. I don't see anything.
No.
There's nothing up here. I'm just concerned that all of a sudden, if they do that and then they come back and they say, well, you guys approved it.
Right.
Well, so.
And it's quite clear that we had a discussion that it could happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm worried that that could be considered a point discharge.
So I can, I can take this back and, and look at that exact aspect. I do have to be cognizant about timeframe because they did submit for a zoning permit for this. If, if we can find a way to keep the water on site and everything like that, I'm comfortable moving forward with it. And if it, if someone needed to or someone felt so strongly, it could be something that gets brought in terms of an appeal, action or whatnot with you. Now, an appeal for, for a wetlands decision doesn't take that much, you know, it's just a matter of someone bringing it back in front of you guys. But, yeah, it is the same property owner all the way around.
All the way around?
Yep, well, two of the sides there, the north and the east.
Paul's point of if they have perk rates that are that good, it makes total sense to put it in a drywell.
Disappear.
Right.
It'll be gone.
Which, I mean, talking.
Then you keep it all on your property.
Talking with the applicant, he's kind of a younger contractor, you know, on, on this. I, I would imagine he would take the advice from us, so. So if it's something that we would look to do, and I can ask Bob to update that on the plan and, provided the applicant, you know, approves that and, and get it, get it sized for, for a drywall.
Yeah.
Because then we're gonna find out if it's good or bad.
Right, we'll know real quick.
We'll tell which one was, which one's the truth.
Exactly.
Well, and, I mean, especially they're, they're proposing a basement here, I mean, it's a partial basement only because there's a garage.
Yeah.
But they're proposing a basement, so you would, you would think the water wouldn't be that high if you were proposing a.
Yeah, something's not right, there's no way you could put a basement.
There could be an error.
There's no way you could be putting a basement in if the water's right there.
I mean, you may want to look at a couple things. One, the definition of a point discharge.
Yep.
Right, because I believe that that is a point discharge, that you're, you're directing flow onto somebody's property that you don't have the right to drain to.
Okay.
In my opinion, I don't want to speak for Paul, but I think we're kinda on the same page there.
Yep, it should be kept on the property.
It should be.
It should be kept on the property.
And then see if he's open.
Unless he has drainage rights.
And he might.
Yep.
If he has drainage rights, that's a completely different thing.
Okay.
And then really, if, if the perk is really this quick, there is no reason why they can't put in a drywall.
Let me get back to the applicant and to his engineer and just see if we can make that modification. Assuming those modifications are done and stuff, is there any concerns with moving forward at a staff level?
What do you think after?
I don't, from a, a wetland aspect, I don't think there's really any concern here.
Okay.
It's just that drainage, when.
It's more drainage, it's also just confirming, and I can reach out to the health department just to confirm those numbers are the same.
Yep.
And stuff, they, regardless, they do have an approval.
Right, yes.
So unfortunately, the approvals, when they come in, they don't give us all of the stuff.
From the health department and a lot of record, it kind of makes a difference.
Yeah, it is a unique property in that sense, yeah, to have all of those, you know, items come together.
There can't be that many more lots of record left.
Well, you know, and, and I don't know if this is a product of the sewer moratorium, but people will get creative, you know, on, on lots. This lot, normally, you would probably be looking to do a sewer connection, it's right there.
Oh, yeah.
It's right there.
Sewer main's right there, yeah.
And he's, he's not because of the sewer moratorium.
But I do think you make, like, something like this could be creative, slide on grave, there's no issues.
Yes.
Yeah.
You get rid of the footing drain, you get rid of all that stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll discuss, I'll be discussing some of that with them as well too.
With that thing, you're better at it. You're quicker. All right, so that takes care of that. Aquifer update.
Yeah, I figured.
Now, we said that, should we go ahead and schedule aquifer for next month and worst case, we just don't do it?
Uh, I don't think we're gonna have applications that quick. So correspondents did go out to about twelve different businesses, I've heard back from two of them already. Colts Plastics and Boudreaux's, the welding. And, you know, so we did give them a hundred and eighty days. Everybody in, in our program is expired, the last time they applied was two thousand and nine. So everyone's expired. I had given them some leeway around the time I took it over because COVID and, you know, most land use decisions were automatically pushed, except for aquifer. Aquifer wasn't really named, some towns took it as it was, some didn't. The state is, you know, kind of waking up a little bit and they did reach out, they've reached out to all the aquifer agencies to ask for their updated stuff. So we've kind of taken that as the opportunity to go through, update, we updated, myself and Allison Brady updated our applications.
There's only twelve, you said that.
Only twelve and.
Who are they, just out of curiosity, because those two have responded, do you have a recollection of, I'm curious, aren't you?
Yeah, I have.
I have a pretty good idea.
I have the list, hold on.
Town Fair Tire's gotta be one of them.
Yep, they are, it's under a different LLC, but they are, yes.
Uh, the, the wire place there on twelve, by Big Y.
Oh, Siri?
Yeah, whatever.
Calls himself now.
Siri, I'll double check, I think they previously were just like out of it, they had.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it, so there almost seemed to be no new entities, if I recall correctly here.
And then who's, who's in charge of Hutchinson?
Hutchinson is, is, is not one that got it because they are not active, there's no business and it's expired.
Yeah.
So that adds to its own logistical items with that because they could propose one to maintain it and everything like that. But that entity has, they're, they're marketing the building.
Didn't they just, didn't they just take a building down over there?
Uh, one of the old offices was being, was being taken down over there, which was essentially a mobile home, you know, the way it's temp offices. Let's see, so we had Killenly Asphalt Products, which they only have one of their garages actually in it. It's like an office slash garage at the very front of Killenly Asphalt. It's not the asphalt, you know, company. NCOG, they are in there, certain, now, there are certain exemptions that some of these might fall in, like our bus garage.
I was just gonna say, if NCOG's in it, our garage is.
Yep, our garage is, is one as well, so Dave and Matt got applications from us for them, as well as the sewer plant.
Yeah.
Yeah, why didn't they respond to you, don't they care?
Huh?
They didn't respond to you?
Oh, no, they did.
I bet they did.
They said, they said thank you.
Yeah, I bet they did.
So L and M's gotta be, right?
Yeah, it has to be.
Has to be.
The old sheetrock.
Yeah.
The, the building supply, I have to clarify with the town fire marshal and stuff because if, they might be there, but they might not have anything that would trigger. So we tried to follow the, what should be registered or not, and I went after the ones that seemed to be obvious, to have different things. So it depends on what they have in there, but I don't believe they have tanks or anything in, on that property. Whereas like NCOG does, so.
I would think so, I mean, they have trucks, you'd think that they would.
I'll verify, I'll verify, I don't think they were on our.
Something.
Yeah, I don't think they were on our initial.
Fuel heat cleaning?
Yeah, anything.
Well, i- if they're not fueling there, if just the trucks parked there, it wouldn't necessarily meet it. But I, I'll confirm, so Town Fair Tire, the Town Garage, NCOG, the Shell Station.
Really, across the street?
Yeah.
Would that put Walgreens and Dunkin' Donuts in the car wash?
Yeah, they're all in there, but like, something like Dunkin' Donuts would not be.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a little service, service station that's with the Shell. Boudreaux's Welding, the Dentist, at ten forty North Main, because of some of their stuff, they're usually one, they had an old registry. So again, we kind of focused on the ones we knew had awards and printing, depending on what they're doing on site.
Post office?
Ben, uh, let's see. Nine sixty-nine North Main Street, which was Bentley Realty Associates LLC, which is heavy manufacturing there, slash Colts Plastics.
Oh, okay.
Elmville Mill, also Colts Plastics. And.
Spiral?
Ninety War Egan, we had as well.
Yeah, Spiral must be Colts's.
Spiral has a state license, they just renewed it, they're the only one that's current, because I, during COVID, I did the inspection. So.
Ninety War Egan, is that?
That's Siri.
That's Siri.
That's Siri.
Okay.
Yep, yeah.
I think you should get on the town, they should be.
They should, I bet they respond.
I did.
I guarantee you, he got a response.
I did follow the, the old letter, that I'm pretty sure Linda Walden wrote, that was a hundred and eighty days after notification.
And technically, every month, you have time for an aquifer, right? Isn't it, isn't that how it's advertised?
Of course, it starts at seven.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I believe that's why we initially moved to seven.
Yes, just in case those issues came up, right.
So some of the stuff I didn't include in your packet, but I did submit a, what was it, determining regulatory status, aquifer protection, it's like a little checklist for them to go through. The overall instructions for the full application, which has some Q and A, and then the full application. For the most part, everything we're gonna be seeing is renewals, there's, I don't think anyone really knew here. But we'll confirm, there's possibility we've missed some, we're kind of try to go through and identify. We followed the municipal guideline to hopefully do that, but twelve isn't bad, it's not too bad.
Okay, then that takes, takes care of that, but just out of curiosity, weren't you wonder, the new storage place, what did you find out down there?
Oh, so we, so we have an application already.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, so we do have an application, there are no wetlands on there, but there is some drainage in, in that area. So there was drainage from that parking lot in that area that was all covered in briars and mucked up, and I think there was a shopping cart and other stuff. They had cleared a lot of it, but they cleared a lot of the stuff over there to start doing the test holes for the health department. So a storage on twelve is looking to do two more buildings and they're working with the Deere's next door to do like a lot.
Say where those buildings gonna go, I think.
Yeah, oh, there's, there's a decent, there's a decent lot there, next, between there and the gas station, there's, there's some nice slots right there, but. Yeah, so they're looking to move forward. Now, that's an area, for instance, back when two thousand and nine would have had Level B aquifer in that area. The Level A now is out in the woods, it's out towards Tilcon, this property.
Interesting.
And that's all I really have for the aquifer update.
So you did spot that activity down there, you knew that.
Well, so I.
It's not kind of on your turf.
It worked out perfectly, I went out there and I looked at it and I, I look at the stakes and I try to figure out whose handwriting it is from our usual, you know, suspects. Yeah, it, well, it, it was CLA. Yep, it was CLA, I got back to the office and I was looking up stuff and my phone rang and it was CLA asking about submitting their application. And I was like, good timing. Which normally, you know, if you're doing your test holes and you're doing, you know, perk tests and whatnot, it doesn't necessarily trigger a permit with us yet, but. It's usually when we get our phone calls from neighbors. I don't believe we have a council liaison on tonight.
Who's gonna give us the rundown on how things are going?
We're starting to move towards budgets and everything, that's, it's that time of year. I'm trying to think, Mary Clorio did put in her notice, she's gonna be working with NCOG. And I believe we are gonna be looking to get an interim town manager, that was her suggestion, to get an interim town manager until they can get a new town manager. We will see, I'll probably know what most of you know.
Well, tell Mary that her building's.
That's right. Tell Mary to get on that.
I am, I am at the council meeting tomorrow night, so I will, I will see, you know, about that stuff. I'll also try to remind our liaison, you know, of our normal meeting time.
Perfect.
Any updates on the sewer plant?
I have no updates on it, I know they did update the moratorium, I think we talked about that a couple of months ago. It does allow Dave Capasione to have, I would say, a little more authority or leeway in looking at applications. And we've had some people come in for, you know, renovations and reusing somewhat dormant structures and Dave's works with them to try to establish what were the flows and what are the proposed flows. And as long as it is wash, he will, has the ability to move forward. He does have discretion to move it up to the WPCA as a whole and have them weigh in. Generally, I would imagine most applications, if they do go to the WPA, WPCA at this point would probably be a no. Unless they're something truly, you know, of public interest or good that they want to move forward with it. But for the most part, Dave can take all applications.
Okay.
It'll be a drawn-out project.
Yeah.
It'll be a nightmare.
I have a fun one, I can bring up real quick.
Oh, bring us a fun one.
So we're, this is us kind of joking internally and Karina probably is the only one that caught the joke based off the, the password. For, we made a quick logo for you guys, for your, for your agenda. Most of the other boards have them, conservation, whatnot, we didn't, I didn't want to put something like this on there and you guys to like revolt on me. So it's just simple Killenly, IWC, it's got some reads.
Do we look like the type that.
Do you, I, I didn't know if you cared or not, this is an Allison Art Project, I thought I would bring it up.
They kind of look like small weapons. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, this, I, I will refer to Allison, she's, are my environmental degree person, so. Yeah, no, we, we would, we would want to show cat tails.
But either could look like a weapon.
I want marijuana.
A little, oh, a little, yeah. It is legal now, but I will remind you that we are on Facebook right now.
Paul Archer.
Paul Archer said.
But, yeah, no, it's an idea, we had, we had one, me and Eric, way back when, had one for. But, yeah, no, uh, it's an idea. We had, we had one, me and Eric, way back when, uh, had one for aquifer. Joking around with some of the aquifer and MS four stuff, uh, Eric the Raindrop, uh, maybe we'll dust him off for you guys, but. Uh, part of it spoke to like our sustainable CT or even our, um, some of our stuff in the Plan of Conservation Development, which asked for outreach.
Yeah.
Um, you know, working with, you know.
Must not be enough applications coming in.
I, I will not take credit for this, so this was, this was Ms. Brady in our office, uh, she. Yeah.
Spreading the.
I'll, I'll see, maybe she can come up with some alternatives. She'll probably have a limited, limited time to be able to come up with it, but. She commented on it when she was proofreading the agenda for us, so, uh, most of hers have little logos, so.
Have we had any of the chicken flu with you, any?
Yeah, we do.
Um, well, so we had a nice, uh, meeting, uh, it's on Facebook. You guys can go through. It was a Planning for Farms, uh, meeting. It was hosted by Connecticut Farm Trust, the Town of Killingly, Yukon Extension, um, and the Department of Agriculture. It was hosted here. We had about fifty, sixty people attend. I, um, yeah, it wa- it was good. It talked about a lot of grant opportunities, uh, uh, different options. And even, and then also just different resources. Um, that is on the town Facebook page. Uh, it'd probably be the meeting right below this meeting. Uh, if you're scrolling down, um, it was well-attended. Um, uh, they did touch on the bird flu, uh, stuff and the culling of some of the, um, chickens and how that's most likely been our reason for eight dollars, nine dollars, a dozen.
It is, without a doubt.
Um, but I, I, talking with our fire marshal, he was saying in St. Thomas, it was like twenty-one dollars a dozen. With roosters and everything running all over the island, but still twenty-one dollars a dozen.
The avian influenza has been moved to the, to the cattle industry and all of that. State of Connecticut has had six dairy farms in their pilot program that they test monthly. And then they were going to go to testing everyone that either shipped or raw, raw milk dairies and the whole shebangy. I can't remember if it was March first or April first, that they're gonna start monthly testing of all of them.
Really?
And it's been, yeah, it's around.
Is there any signs, like, on the chickens where you can tell that they're serious?
Chickens die quickly.
They just die off quickly.
They die quickly, and it's respiratory. The dairy cattle, it's, um, it's, it's, it's just a bug.
Just a bug.
Yeah, yeah.
How do you get rid of it? You just bury them and that's it?
With the poultry? I believe that they've been incinerating, but.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I thought, I believe they're incinerating on the poultry.
Yeah.
The, the problem, the risk with the cows is that it's transferred by humans, the handlers, right? Which we don't know how lethal it is for people.
But it doesn't seem to, it doesn't seem, it's something that's been around for literally a hundred years, without a doubt. And it runs its cycle. It's, you have fall dysentery with the cows. It's typically from the birds and the whole shebang. Because that's why dairy farms try to put up netting and everything, just to keep out those, those annoying birds. Because they do spread it.
Is the milk affected by the, can you still market the milk from the cows?
So if anyone has any questions on livestock, we're gonna send them to Sandy.
No, unfortunately, it's what we do, yeah.
Yeah.
And there's more and more testing coming.
But, uh, other than that, I think that was, that's it. So if we have a motion to adjourn, unless.
Motion.[1789.14]